I've got seven o'clock, so let's go ahead and get started. If you, uh, I think most everybody is, I was walking in, signing on the sign-in sheet, we appreciate that. Should be up here on this front desk. We'll call a meeting to order here at seven oh dot. For the public hearing on the site plan for Landmark Family Life Center. All right, I'm Trey White, Chairman of City of Longyear Planning Commission. The purpose of this public hearing meeting is to obtain citizen comments and/or concerns of the site plan that is being presented. And before we get started, I'd like to give a brief overview of how we intend for the meeting to flow. First, we'll kind of have a presentation of the site plan by the applicant group. I know I want to, I know there's a group, so whoever wants to, you bet. And so, before we get started, uh, so if you present the site plan, any dialogue between the applicant, planning commission, public will be minimal, so you can kind of talk, present what you've got going on, right? Uh, after that, the presentation is completed, then we'll open the floor for any public comments. And there are a few rules. Uh, we kind of go through this every time we have a public hearing, if you've been here before, so I apologize if you're hearing this again, but there are a few rules you can try to follow for the public comment time. Uh, we ask that all speakers state their name and address and confirm they are a resident of Longyear. Uh, we would ask that each speaker keep their time to two to three minutes. Uh, unruly behaviors prohibited. I don't think this is a very volatile issue that we've had in the past, but, uh, please be courteous and considerate with your language and actions if there's somebody that had, uh, a disagreement. And then after the public comment time is completed, we will then offer the applicant opportunity for any closing comments. After those closing comments, we will adjourn the public hearing meeting. And then we will transition into our regular planning commission meeting at that point in time. Uh, just note that we can have a public hearing prior to the planning commission meeting, so that as planning commissioners, we can take all of the comments into consideration. As a side note, over time, there's been, I think, probably, uh, different means of how we review site plans, if they come before us with a, uh, as a planning commission, I would kind of refer everybody back. And Kelly and I had this discussion, but the section six point one point one of our zoning ordinance was kind of states of what's going on with the site plan review. And specifically, if you get down there to, uh, paragraph three, it says, "Public hearing and site plan proposal shall take place at scheduled meetings at which time interested persons may appear, offer information in support of or against the proposed site plan." Following said, "Public hearing, the planning commission will then take one of the following steps: approve the site plan submitted, approve the site plan for future review, or deny the site plan." So we have some guidelines that we'll be getting here to the next one. All right? That said, I'll open the floor, if you don't mind me on board and presenting. Appreciate y'all being here.
Yes, sir. All right, so my name is Jordan Marks, I'm representing Landmark Missionary Baptist Church here in Longyear, 50 Eagle Street. Uh, we're here tonight to present our plan to build a family life center.
Okay.
I don't know.
Do you want to describe it a little bit?
Okay, so it's gonna be sixty foot wide by seventy-five foot long. Metal building, concrete slab. Uh, we'll have a hallway coming off the front of it, uh, with the double front glass doors. They'll also have a roll-up bay door and a side door that will be accessed through the kitchen area. They'll have a kitchen in it, uh, for fellowships. It'll have a couple classrooms for the teens and youth. Uh, also gonna have a storage room. And we'll have a smaller type basketball court. It'll be like a multi-purpose facility. Of course, we'll play, you know, games and stuff with the kids and whatnot, but it'll be used for lots of different things. Way denser, fellowships, and all kinds of stuff, so. Means it went to the planning treasure rooms. All righty.
Appreciate it. All right, I'll open the floor to any public comment at this time. Anybody who want to come up and speak for or against, or any concerns that I could break forward at this time. Short and sweet, I like it. If there's not any public comments, I don't see any reason to have rebuttal time or anything like that, so we will close the public hearing at seven oh six PM. With that, we will transition into our regularly scheduled Longyear Planning Commission meeting, which is scheduled for tonight, Thursday, June twenty-seventh. We call that to order at seven oh six PM. All right, and first item in business, we have the approval of the minutes from the May meeting. They were all in the packet that Kelly emailed out to us. This as a reminder, Kelly's been emailing these out. She noted on the email, she said if you need a hard copy, just let her know. She would get your hard copy as well. Um, probably not gonna read, uh, every item on the planning commission meeting, or the minutes from five-thirty. But just a quick summary, we had two public hearings, or had a public hearing that had two items. One for conditional use of the daycare, and one for the conditional use of the mobile home at nine sixty-eight Main Street. That public hearing was open at seven oh one, closed at seven eleven. We reconvened at seven fifteen. And you see there, the minutes that we approved, two or three months, they're worth minutes. And then we went straight into the review of the conditional use and our recommendations to the city council. We had made a motion to approve the conditional use for the daycare, the home daycare, and then, uh, we also, uh, there was a vote, but we did not have enough for a quorum at the time, because we had four in favor, one abstained on a vote to deny the conditional use for the mobile home at nine sixty-eight Main Street. So we postponed, uh, any formal decision on the mobile home at nine sixty-eight Street to the special call, uh, planning commission meeting that we had here a couple weeks ago. All right, we adjourned at seven thirty PM that night. Is there any, uh, question or corrections upon the minutes from the May thirtieth meeting? At that time, I would entertain a motion to be approved.
Motion to approve.
Stated? Motion to approve, uh, run. Any further comment? Not all those in favor of reading the May thirtieth, if they say no, I think opposed, there are none. There is no old business. New business, Landmark Family Life Center. Okay. Just wanted to ask if we have some questions here, as we opened down to the floor. Is there any questions or anything like that, or any comments, anybody want to start in?
So the one concern I have is, I'm not a hundred percent positive of the highway setback. And I was concerned about that.
So, before we answer that, I have a question about your intent. Is your intent to take this plan and then go and build the building? Is this your final private plan that you're submitting to the city? Or are you just trying to get input on how to proceed?
So as far as the plan goes, this is our contractor. He will be, he will have an actual plan drawing for the building. Uh, I'm thinking you just have the site plan, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it, it doesn't have, I think there was one setback on it, maybe? It doesn't have any of the setbacks shown on it, it doesn't have the parking shown on it?
It has existing parking on this.
And here's, here's where I came from, is I was looking at this. This is an existing piece of property that's, they are, they're tearing down a building and it's a rebuilt building, but we're not changing the, it's not like we're changing, they're changing the use, we're not changing the ownership. We're not changing anything, we're not redeveloping each property, we're saying, we're building new buildings on it.
Right.
And so...
So, um, for this building, if it's a gym, uh, our code requires you to have one space per four seats of parking. And then for your, uh, main worship facility, you have to have the same, so one space per four seats. So as you build this building, you have to make sure you still maintain your parking requirements for your main building and then your second building. The other thing is, okay, so it doesn't show the setbacks, so for the highway corridor overlay, you have to have a fifty-foot setback. But if the parking is on the side or rear, you can have a fifteen-foot setback. But right now, I don't know what that setback is, um, from this plan at all. So, um, also in our code, technically, this is an accessory building. So if you were to make it its own lot, right now, if you have it on the same, uh, within the same boundary as the other, an accessory building may not be greater than twenty-five percent of the original building. It doesn't show square footage of the existing building, but just eyeballing it, it looks like it's almost the same size.
I think that's residential, though.
So on page fifty, that's code. It's for everything.
So...
Six points. As part of a campus, would we consider an accessory building, the same way that we like a detached garage or a residential? I would think that would be different.
In this, this law, it's not, it'll help, I mean, y'all might have, I mean, one, you could consider the main church principal building, one could consider, I guess, the new building principal building to a certain extent, you know, because we're looking at the main campus and the multi-use. I don't know that I'd necessarily consider it an accessory building, uh, because I guess that would mean that we'd have a main building. So I saw what, is that church itself was the principal, then this would be the accessory.
You do agree that it would be accessory? And then as far as seating, if there's no permanent seating in it, it's just a building with...
But I mean, if we have a school campus, so we're gonna tell the school that they only can have eight, the second building, only twenty-five percent of the main building.
Yeah, but a school campus is probably more of a PD, so they...
Or...
A planned development, right? Because they're gonna have a lot more, uh, each building will be divided up into its own lot. It's still spread out. So in order to be on the highway corridor overlay, okay, so the billable area of your lot, um, is only fifty percent of the total area, and then, uh, lots have to be, uh, two hundred by sixty-one, so twelve thousand square feet. And that's on page forty-one.
And I think that would only apply, in my opinion, if we were looking at developing a brand-new piece of property. Right?
As you continue to develop, you still have to maintain...
I don't know that I agree with that. I'm not saying wrong, and I may be wrong, as far as that goes.
Two hundred by sixty-one, sorry. So the minimum lot area is on page forty-one, and it's number one at the top, under five point two point three, point two.
Yes, excuse me, could you speak up just a little bit?
Me, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, now can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, part is, I don't...
This is gonna be a separate piece of property, it's not like you, this is all gonna be one, and you're talking about multiple buildings.
We had, we had the parsonage there.
Right, and even that all, yeah.
We're just basically putting another building right back in its place.
So according to our codes, an accessory building can't be, um, it may not be greater than twenty-five percent of the principal building. So your accessory building, which would be this building, cannot be, it's almost the same size as your main building. And according to our code...
I'm not sure how big our current building is, I have to get that number out there.
So that's on, okay, that's on page fifty. So that was the other thing that I was saying, it doesn't have the square footage of the main building, and I can't see the overall boundary of the property. Um, it doesn't tell us how big your overall property...
So that's one point two three acres.
Can you change that over into square feet?
I can't. How much is it?
One point two three acres.
So in section six point two, accessory building, one point two three acres.
Twenty-three thousand, not seven eight.
Thirty-three thousand?
Which is forty-three thousand, about a hundred and sixty feet, and one acre.
So that's perfect, um, you...
You know how many acres you have altogether there on the property?
It's, it's a little over an acre, I don't know the exact amount.
I just, I just pulled up the other piece, it's one point six nine, sorry. Off of County Devon.
So that's over seventy-three thousand square feet.
So if we could subdivide it up, uh, you have plenty of, uh, square footage. So if you have forty-three thousand square feet, um, one lot only has to be twelve thousand square feet. So then, if we could put it on its own lot, it wouldn't be an accessory building anymore, it would be its own primary building. Because right now, it's too, to me, it looks like it's too big, um, because it can only be a quarter of the size of the main building.
It's forty-five hundred square feet. That's how big the building will be, sixty by seventy-five.
Or seven hundred square feet. But then how big is your existing building, is what I'm saying.
I don't know, I'll have to get that information.
So, I only, kind of roughly, based on the scale, um, earlier, it was like, nine thousand square foot, take, there's a whole square, take away two thousand, uh, for that chunk, and it had two hundred square foot.
Okay, so just looking at it, it can't even be half the size of the main building. It can only be a quarter of the size, and it's not a quarter of the size.
Whole size of the building was roughly sixty-six hundred, uh, square foot. So twenty-five percent of that would have been sixteen feet.
In the definitions of accessory building, in my mind, the, like, um, a detached garage, maybe a...
I don't see, I personally don't see a worship center or a family life center to be...
Accessory building. It's not, it's, that would be, to me, something that's like incidental to the purpose, but this is all the combined purpose of it. They're gonna have worship meetings in both, they're gonna have restrooms in both, they're gonna have a kitchen in both. It's not accessory, in my opinion.
I agree.
I agree.
That's, uh, yeah.
Okay, a building or use which is subordinate to and serves a principal building or use, which is subordinate in area, extent, or purpose to the principal building or use, and which is located on the same lot of record as the principal building or use. Are you a bottom drawer, my dad's a civil engineer and...
If they, if they're gonna have to split it, they're gonna have to go through a lot split approval to split their lot.
Yes.
May I say something?
Yeah.
You bet, yes, sir.
Both buildings are gonna accomplish the same thing. We're gonna be worshiping in both of them, we're gonna be fellowshipping in both of them, we just need more room.
Yeah, I agree.
And also, the other churches in the city, they, there's several that have them. How are those, as far as y'all's planning stuff, how are those rated? I mean, wouldn't it, could you look at how those were done to see if they were done with, as an accessory, accessory building, or, you know what I'm saying? Because it's the same thing.
During our time on the, during our time on the planning commission, this, these current commissioners, over the last ten years, there hasn't been an additional building approved by the planning commission. Um, the Nazarene Church was rebuilt completely after the tornado during our tenure here, um, and...
I just thought maybe there was record of how that...
The Methodist Church did have an additional building, but we're gonna have to go back further in record than that to see how that was handled. The Methodist Church does have a large secondary building that was built, that's probably equal size to their, um, structure that they had at the time before the tornado.
And I know First Baptist, theirs is pretty big, I don't know how it relates to their main building, but it's...
And that's gonna be further back than our experience here. This is a little bit different since it's not, since it's not a commercial purpose, so we're, and a little bit of uncharted waters, I would say.
Do you know where the First Baptist is right there?
Possibly after these codes, because these were in the nineties.
You were talking about a separate, uh, acre lot, inch of a one. Old Neil Luthman actually donated part of the land that was built on to the church. So it was actually in his name, and then he donated, and we got it all...
And they acquired it in two different pieces.
It should be in a separate...
So are, y'all are demoing a house, right?
The house is gone.
It's gone, okay, so the house is gone, so the house may be on its own property, it may have its own property.
If we go back on the history of the church, the church built the house, so the men in the church, I know where it was built.
Okay, do you know if there, there's a property boundary line that's still there, or that was ever emerged?
I'm gonna say probably not, but I do know before Neil died, he donated to the city of Longyear, the rest of Old Neil's property, which joins, joins the church.
Do you know approximately timeframe when the, when that property was acquired, the Huffman property?
Probably been about five to six years.
Oh, pretty recently then? So it was acquired, the ownership of it was acquired by the church after this, because this church was there for some time.
Yeah, the house had been there.
And it was in somebody else's name all of that time?
The house was in the church's name.
The house was, okay. Let me see if I can find that.
And Kim, if we look at section six point three, we're talking about principal buildings. It says, "A lot or parcel of property shall be occupied by no more than one principal building or structure. Exceptions may occur. Provided, this regulation specifically prevents more than one principal building on a lot of record. For example, you can let your townhouse residential planning development for multiple building developments in commercial districts." So, so it's almost like you'd say, like, if you have an exception, that have two principal buildings on here, probably. It's in section six three there.
Would it have to be a...
But that would be, would it have to be approved?
It says, "Commercial districts," so it's made this, it's made this, it's made this count as a highway next to commercial.
Hold on, but what does it say right before that, hold on, what page are you on?
Page fifty, the next section there from your accessory building, paragraph that you were referencing, page fifty.
It is a planned unit development.
So, I mean, in this situation, I think we can make an exception and say, hey, we have two principal buildings on one piece of property. It's stated in section six point three. I know I'm not supposed to read my text, and Stephen, Councilman Crick, uh, he texted me and said that we should possibly grant a variance on this site plan review, so...
So even if we determined that it was an accessory building, we could still grant a variance in the size?
Clay, any concerns with what's got going on here?
I, I still can't see where it's an accessory building, because it's gonna be used with the same as the main building. I just think it's a, it's...
Two principal...
Two principal buildings, all or nothing.
But our code says you can't have two principal buildings.
It, no, it doesn't. It says, "Exactions may occur provided this regulation specifically prevents more than one principal building on a lot of record," right? For example, it's kind of like saying, hey, we've got multiple buildings built on one particular building. I think it's just almost like the school campus, we don't go through schools, when we, when we're designing a school, we don't, and we have one large campus, they don't parcel that piece of property off from the school. Like the, we got the middle school, or we got the gymnasium, or whatever else, you know, it's not like the gym has a separate address for the, uh, you know, for the arena, or whatever else, so... I agree that it's detached structures that it's adjacent to. Now, we may be going, we're in the south, from the standpoint that we think the church is always the main building, we got a couple other buildings on it.
Okay.
condition, actually.
Okay.
Run.
As long as it's pulling up off the highway, I don't see any issues.
They have two different parcel numbers on the tax record. They have the parcel that's one point two three acres, and the parcel that's zero point four six acres.
I can't hear you.
I don't think the lot size or anything's a difference.
Are we on the other floor to check the floodways, they grab the flood?
Yeah, exactly.
And that's what I'm trying to do, so can they put it on the same property, or would they have to, um, flat it on a separate property boundary line?
Great.
Hey, that second parcel is the parking lot that's to the south.
Understood.
Okay.
I was looking at it.
I can, Trey, I think there's three parcels to the church.
Okay.
Because the house on the other side, it's a lot. And then we sold the house, but we kept a quarter of an acre or a half an acre on the other side for parking. So there would probably be three parcels, that would be one, the church itself that it sits on would be another, and then whatever we got from Mr. Old Neil Huffman in the past would be the third parcel to the church house.
I think that's the point four six, is the, what was with the house that... I think that's the, the point four six is the, what was with the house that you got? The, um, that, that you got donated, I think it already all, from what I can tell, it already shows to be all together.
Okay.
I hope, I get that.
So, are there- My dad is a civil engineer, he's really good at reading the code, and he said that a variance would be appropriate for this. This would be the perfect use, for time to do a variance.
So you're gonna put a check in there?
So I guess we need a floor plan that shows all of the parking to make sure that you're meeting all the parking requirements. The ADA parking, so like this, you'll have to submit another plan that shows everything, so we need the full property boundary line.
Joey, how were y'all, I mean, were y'all gonna do any more of the site plan this, honestly? How, how did y'all have that drawn up, or how was the contractor working that out to actually, y'all?
So, yeah, Vince, Vince said it did the site, uh, the elevations.
Okay.
And as far as the parking goes, we are gonna add to the front of that facility. And we wouldn't plan on doing anything other than that right now, cause that's supposed to be figured into the price.
Sure, sure.
So, um, we will be adding more parking and I, we will get a drawing for y'all right now.
So, would you add parking, what are you calling the front? Is it the apartment, the awning or the?
It'd be where the awning is, yes.
Okay, and that'll be facing the highway, facing the street?
No, well, it's at an angle, it's kinda at an angle.
Facing the other building, okay.
And then how'd y'all arrive at that finished floor elevation?
The, the surveyor, I mean, he's the one that did all that, he's the one that kinda helped set it up to where this was fit in that area. We know we're in a flood area.
Right.
So we, we had it worked out to where we could, you know, do this building in that area, that's really about the only place on the property we could.
And that elevation fit within that?
Yes.
That, not just spoken with, uh, Trey Foster earlier, and, you know, the renovations as far as where, where they need to be, they did as far as requirements.
Yes, that's not understanding.
So, in reference to your comments about the parking, though, how many are you expecting to see?
I have no idea.
Well, I know we have-
I don't know how many, uh-
Do you know how many current parking spaces you have?
I guess, I guess it'd be about fifty or so.
Yeah. Probably more than that, really. We have, we have more parking on the other side of the church, um, I guess that would be the south side of the church.
Do you know what your current seating capacity is of the main building?
Uh, you might want to, well, it's, it's gonna be probably a hundred and fifty, I would say, to two hundred.
So that's one to thirty-six dot points, that's, that's something like that. Will there be any permanent seating in this new building?
No, no seating, I mean, except for fellowships.
Right, you want to set chairs.
Portable chairs.
Yeah, I have my phone, 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 check this, disposable chairs, that type of thing.
What y'all planning on doing around the, the green space, you know, around the, where they exist in powder coal age, I will leave that grass or?
Yes, yes, it'd just be, yeah, the grass. We'll probably do some landscaping around it, dress it up. Yeah, that was the last thing really off the side. This is landscaping, like, since it falls under the highway. It says that it has to be landscaping, I think it's not part of the, I guess, off, off-street parking. So how would y'all like to-
Is there, is there, I'm sorry, I have to park it. Is there a requirement for parking spaces if there's no permanent seating and there's no, for business, we have so much customer traffic? So, is there a requirement for something like this?
Parking on page two two four. So, how about the building? Should we have the, you know, with you?
Let this worship facility one space for four seats. So what they said, so if you got, you got, you got fifty spaces, you got two hundred seats.
So, in wording of a motion, would we be going for variance or just simple motion to approve?
We can, I would approve for future review.
Can include variance in the same motion?
Well, I think there's gonna be a variance, so what are we trying to? So, I'm not convinced there's anything, what are we trying to beg it from?
But- I'm not exactly sure, cause it was just, I mean, y'all were worried about having two principal buildings on the same piece of property. So, I mean, that would be the only variance.
Yep, it is, it, it, we wanted to-
To allow that.
To allow. So, I'll kind of wrap this stuff.
Cause we do want a future review or, I mean, would you need a future review?
What are we, future review?
Well, we need a site plan that has the property boundary line, the parking on there, the handicap parking, the parking caps, um, to meet our landscape requirements. So in our code, uh, when you're doing the final, refer to page, uh, fifty-four for parking, page, uh, fifty-five and forty-five for landscaping. You're gonna be flying on your building coverage, so you should probably still put it on the, um, let's see, and then we need to see the setbacks. There aren't any setbacks on this plan.
They got the one up there, ten foot at the top, right, from the parent property line.
But that's used up, the highway, highway setback.
I'm pretty sure greater than fifty foot on the highway.
Uh, apparent ten foot building setback, what is that?
Well, it's the property line, I took the top.
So it's a side door setback?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the only setback y'all are showing on the plat? Oh, and the power line by the way.
Well, why would that have, there's none.
No, that's, they're showing it on there.
Right, but it's a fifty foot setback there, yeah. But they're gonna be, the, the fifty feet from the highway is, is achieved, just from, actually, I'm trying to look at it.
So it's fine, but it still has to be shown on the plan, it has to be in our official record.
So we're leaving that parking, landscaping, etc.
There need additional lighting?
Y'all buy some wall packs on the outside of it, maybe a little bit.
That base down, you know, under the awning.
Yeah.
And possibly maybe a little run of the building to kinda hit the parking lot, but.
The only thing we ask is that you, you know, we have a couple buildings that have come in over time in town, and if you drive through, the light clearly drop to your eyes. So, you know, most time it'll be straight down, or whatever, if you point down, and then it'll spread out. I don't know if you're going to the corner of the building typically, that's not that big of a deal, but, you know, you got a couple wall packs on there, but, yeah, yeah. Secure around the corner of the building. But we, that's, that's a typical ask from our standpoint, is if you, if like, you have a down body, you pointed out, you know, cause it residential, you develop across the street or somewhere else, and you know, across, maybe on your side of the road or wherever else, that you're not chiming somebody back door or something.
I think the only one would be on the southwest corner, one story court towards the creek.
Yes.
And hit that parking lot.
Yes. I'll hope anybody's in the middle of the creek. So we should-
I'm watching our motion.
Okay.
Okay, I would make a motion, I would move that we approve for future review of the plat showing the property setbacks, the property boundary lines, landscaping, and granting a variance for two principal buildings on the same property.
Are you making this into a motion or you just gotta tell them this out?
I would make that motion.
And I will second that motion.
Okay.
Oh.
Alright, so now we have, we have a motion on the floor, we, by Gina, we have a second.
No, I didn't.
So, we will open it up for some additional discussion.
Can we include parking in that?
Can, I can amend my motion.
Well, hold on, make sure. So, let's go, let's go from, you had property setbacks, and possibly, these are things that it did, cause I'm-
Yes.
Probably Lawrence, I'm trying to figure out, hey, what do you want me to do?
Setbacks, the property boundary lines, and the landscaping.
And as far as landscaping, I would consider that to be, hey, if we have an area, we're not gonna say we gotta have a certain kind of plan or anything. We can just have an area of landscaping, right, that they can park on the side plan, we all agree with that?
It's saying, landscaping apart between structure and principal arterial.
Your apartment's three shrubs and-
Yeah. That's just more or less an area for plantings and all that other stuff, you know, they don't have to go in there and park individual shrubs. You know, if you start getting to the commercial world, you know, they start looking for landscapers.
Long story short, in between the building and the highway, show landscaping.
You don't have to show-
You two are the only people we can give, if we gave you, you two, we gave you.
Hey, Vince.
Okay.
Not trying to be rude, I just, I wanna hear.
Sure, man. So we got property boundary, we have setbacks, we have the landscape, for that it's in the motion, and what else was part of the motion?
I can reread it.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor, is this on?
Yeah, if we can get that.
Motion on the floor to approve for future review of the plat to show the property setback lines, the property boundary lines, landscaping, and granting a variance for two principal buildings on the same property. That's the motion that's been made and seconded.
Okay. Principal building.
I don't have an amendment, cause that wasn't in the original motion.
And we have to review the plat and the new the site plan, or, I mean, plat, plat, site plan.
Future review, uh, well, wrap for future review of plat.
Scan up that, well, that on there, right? Yep, and then, uh, I would like to amend it to include parking and maybe that parking.
So you want, so, alright, so handicap parking?
To be shown.
Handicap parking to be shown.
Are you wanting just about the handicap, or are you talking about all of the parking?
All of the parking.
Parking in general.
We, we have current handicap parking.
It just needs to be shown on the plat.
Okay.
Yes, that's all. We just have to make sure that you have the required number of parking spaces to park the building.
And we, we know, we know you do, it just needs to be shown on the paper, that's all.
I understand.
And so for every, um, twenty-five spaces, you have to have one handicap space.
Okay.
You currently have four, okay.
For every twenty-five?
Yes.
Is that one?
Yes.
Alright, Gina, you wanna start with that again?
Okay. The motion on the floor was to approve for future review of the plat showing the property setbacks, the landscaping, the property boundary lines, and granting a variance for two principal buildings to be on the same property. The motion was amended to say that the plat should also show the parking and handicap parking.
So, yeah, it's just for not- Hold them up from starting any of their description.
The motion has been, there's a motion to amend it, sorry, there's a motion to amend it.
You want them?
They can't start in charge, strike someone out and approve them.
So we're not approving this?
We're approving for future review, we can't review it, there's not enough information on it.
You're allowed to move to the contractor plans, basically.
Lot requirements, street names, uh, do you have, of course?
I disagree.
It's a side plan, not a plat, it's a building on a different side.
We could, we could, um, have a motion to approve this site plan, and, and approve the thing or building then.
The, the building is the problem, it's about all the things that went with it.
Well, some of them on the drawings, that's kind of what the, but does that mean that that holds them up? I would see that holds them up.
No.
Because if they-
There's nothing about the size of their building or the placement of their building that we're reviewing, except it's gonna be the-
But it is the placement, so we have to review the setbacks.
All the setbacks.
Yeah.
So, I just wanna be sure and understand what the motion is on the floor, whether we think that we are, so I don't know how to vote. If we think that this is gonna be holding them up, so.
So the first thing that we would have to vote on is the, the motion to amend the motion.
So, we-
Which we could vote up or down, and then we could vote to amend that, the original motion again, or we could have a motion to amend it.
So right now, we have a motion on the floor that talks about trying to revise this drawing, right, for, right?
Yes, for future review of the plat.
So would we need to amend this motion to include a, an approval, to include, this would include approval out there?
In the very beginning is, I mean, it is approving it, but for future review, but it's one more.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was about to say, approve the site plan for future review. Right?
Correct.
So, do we, should the motion say we should be approving the site plan for future review? With a future review including this property boundary setbacks, landscape, the variance, but that made it part of the-
I mean, we could just say with everything that's required.
Meeting requirements.
And our plat requirements.
So, would we, I'm trying to think, how's the, is your way to do this?
We kinda have to work backwards, we have to work with the motion to amend first.
Yeah.
And then we can vote on the motion. And then we can vote on the motion, because it already has a second, so it has to be voted, and then amended it.
So this is the amendment to include the handicap parking variance for the prin, two principal buildings, is that right? Is that what we're saying, that amendment?
The amendment.
That Kim just proposed, to start the parking?
Only has to do with adding the requirement to show the parking and handicap parking. That's the, all the thing that's stated.
So we need to take a vote on that amendment?
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion before we take a vote on that amendment?
Just amending the motion.
Amending the motion. Alright. All those in favor of amending the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now we're back to discussion on the motion, do we want to amend it, or do we want to vote on it?
Okay. And... The question would be, do we want to include the language, we want to approve the site plan for future review, and we go into the motion, would that be a, an amendment to the motion that we're saying?
Oh, you mean, can I get two separate motions?
I'm just trying to get all this done in one vote.
That's, that's exactly what it says, the motion is to approve the site plan for future review of plat.
Okay.
Then plat to show property setbacks, landscaping, property boundary lines, and parking and handicap parking, and this motion also includes the granting of a variance for two principal buildings to be on the same property.
Okay. And so, if I, Mr. Lawrence, he's probably saying, okay, what's that mean, for future review, like, how quick do you, do we have to have something for future review? And what would be our response to, Mr. Lawrence on that, in terms? Cause this is probably a hell of a construction, we all...
It's out of six months.
About six months. What would, what would seem reasonable, Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, I would think, a couple weeks.
We gave you two, three months?
The metal building won't be here for a month.
Sir?
The metal building won't be here till... The metal building won't be here till right at the first of August, so, you know, if we could start third work, you know, thirty days before that, get the slab and all done, and ready for the building, that would be great, but, immediate. And so that would be, we're talking in thirty, thirty days from now, we're, take the start.
And I don't know, if we're approving the site plan, they can go ahead and start, you can go ahead and start, that, that's, it's just a matter of trying to get your drawings, out back there.
In six point, one point two, approval is binding, will relay the warning. Less than a minute is approved in accordance with the session, no structure, use, or other element of the approved site plan shall be eliminated, altered, or provided in another manner. However, enforcement also may include such minor changes to site plan that will not cause any problems or changes. So, if, could we amend it? Say that they can start?
Well, I mean, or that they can, well, I think what that means is that, they can start, it's just not, they could turn the building down, you agree?
Right, they can, and it's it.
And it's it right now, say this with all the setbacks. They, they can go up and say, but they don't, let's move this building, you know, they have to come back to what's they... If you're not saying.
Whatever's worth, we can't move.
Yeah.
We're excited, we're excited.
That's where it's at, you're not telling.
So, could they start writing? Yes, they could.
Or slab?
Well, no. Uh, grading is different.
I'm sorry, babe, before we can't hear you.
So grading is just pushing around the dirt, they could build a building pad. And get that in a approximate location, but until we have, I mean, how long will it take y'all to get a, an, a site plan with all of the required information on it?
Couple weeks.
They do thirty days from, right now, we'll be back in thirty days. And, and third works not gonna change anything, from what you did. Then we'll slab, then we'll be in August, that's sixty days.
Well, that's really about forty day, you know, this is June twenty-seventh.
We're almost first July. About same, sit guns will be in August, start.
Building will be here in thirty-five days.
Building will be here, uh, the end of August.
Oh, end of August, okay.
So, you think four and slab sometime in August?
Yes, we're gonna start the pad and all that stuff, and have it ready, when the building gets here, we can start.
Yep.
And our regular meeting is the, is that fourth Thursday, uh, of July? So if we, we had that on the agenda for that, we could approve that final, or we could review.
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth of July. Thank you, Stephen.
I don't think this holds them up, let's be totally honest, but...
I'm not concerned about the parking, mainly because the parking is mostly already there, it's been seen, it's, and they have space to add more parking if we required it. And you're gonna have it shown on that plat.
Yes, we plan to have future parking, it's just, we're gonna pay for the building before we take that financial burden on as well.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to say, and a second. Read the motion one more time, Gina.
The motion is to approve the site plan for future review of the plat, and the plat to show property setbacks, landscaping, property boundary lines, and this motion includes a variant, granting a variance for two principal buildings to be on the same property. The plat also needs to show parking and handicap parking per the amendment to the motion.
Any other comments?
So become upon agreement, for if it holds them up from starting construction, or if we need a way to get approval?
And I'll be honest, on that same point, it's really not a planning commission, it's up to the enforcement officer, enforcement, so we really don't play, I've seen the situation of, because, we, they have approved the site plan, they just gotta catch the drawings up to it. But, that's up to the enforcement officer, on whether or not they actually say, hey, you need to stop what you're doing, call it, or... Alright, any other discussion? Alright. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Appreciate your patience. We have approved site plan for future review. We'll get those, as long as we'll get the amendments, so you'll have, we'll get Kelly, I'll get that too. Alright, um, one last item. For the quick discussions, this is just kind of pulling the planning commission. If you looked at the approved uses in highway mixed use, the permitted uses, there's one for many storage buildings. What is the, any comments from the planning commission, if we had a public hearing next month, to hear from moving many storage buildings from permitted uses to conditional uses?
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate y'all very much.
And I apologize if I came across this rude.
Not at all.
Not at all.
It's not the first time we've heard it. Um, what did you say, special call maybe?
No.
Okay.
Could be part of the business?
Part of the business to review that being with, from the permitted uses to...
Yes, what would be the?
To entertain.
And if, because if we're gonna, if we're going to move them from permitted uses to conditional uses, then we're gonna have to have a public hearing, and we would have to act from that, from that public hearing, and we'd have to make the recommendation at the city council, from that standpoint.
So, um, what I've heard from the city council in the past is that, um, so for something like that, I think that we should strike it from the code, and make it not a permitted use on, um, in highway mixed use.
Many storage use, okay?
Well, if you move it to conditional use, you still have the right to deny it.
But then, city council.
So.
One way I would kind of, just because we're in our...
So, you would want to entertain being, not being able to have any other uses.
Yeah, right now, we're just trying to figure out what...
With then highway mixed use?
I think it would be a good idea to at least move it to conditional.
Okay. Ready, you ready? Come in. Come in. Brian, so, come in. Alright.
Could we let the amendment on the agenda?
And change, murder homes, or mobile homes off of our?
Now, we would just be addressing, uh, I think we would just be addressing the many storage buildings in the next one, and if we have any other future discussion about that, then we'll present that one down.
So will this be a public hearing next month?
It would, it would be, but it would need to be on the official, it's a public hearing, yeah. Alright.
It's just, it's, it's all addressed, y'all, on that, I know where Chris Williams was going, it would not be any other trouble, if you wanted to remove the mobile home, because it all falls under the same ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, when I looked it up, it would be easy just to clump them both together, and make one ordinance to remove both things, if that's what y'all wanted to.
Be simpler to get it.
Um, and get it out of there, it would save money, I mean, because I don't have to draft two ordinances, get two of them published in the papers, all that, if, if y'all are looking at wanting to get rid of both of those options, if that makes sense. We couldn't lump them together and say, we're removing these two conditional use things off this, I would choose.
Probably, with the city council passing the approval of the mobile home, I didn't want to necessarily, I didn't...
I understand, the optics look bad on the, yes, I know.
No, I don't know that that's, we don't wanna necessarily look up, we're circumventing what the city council's...
No, no, and, and I don't disagree.
And one is?
We may not agree with mobile.
Is it one currently conditional and one's currently permitted?
I think part of the reason why it was passed is because it is in as a conditional use, which is represented as, okay, well, it's an acceptable use, so I think it is a good time to bring up, well, okay, well, is it? Because they may have just voted for it just because it is a conditional use, not necessarily because they believe it should be there.
Right, it's correct, so... But, uh, if I hear, so we'll definitely hear on many storages, and it will, uh, also see if anybody has any interest in bringing, I think, regarding the... Mobile homes, uh, this conditional use, take that off.
And, Mr. Chairman, if you want, get with me later, I'll be glad to draft something up for either one of those for y'all. I don't have a problem pulling all the ordinances, and get what y'all want, draft it up.
Uh, thank, I don't know if there's anything I can draft it up, it's more or less just a recommendation from the planning commissioner to the city council, as far as that's all. Alright, um, better want me to extend his appreciation to, uh, all planning commissioners? Alright, and during, over the last week, said just to tell everybody thanks, because he knows this is not a high paid position, but...
Add it to the zeros.
Alright, anything else, we'll be done.
My motion, we adjourn.
We adjourn eight oh four P M.
Thank you.